I got the thumbs up. I know there's going to be some people online as well, but we'll get everything kicked off and call this meeting to order. Welcome commissioners, staff, petitioners, and citizens to the November 12th, Wednesday meeting. We have a full agenda tonight, and I love full agendas because that means good things are happening at our city, so this is all good stuff. Introduction of staff. To my right, we have Donna Witt, administrative planner. Donna? Next to Donna, we have Chad Anis, our associate planner. To my left, we have Krista Hill, our senior planner. Next to Krista is Derek Spear. And then in our front row, we have Ken Prince, our executive director. Next to Ken is David Bent, our legal counsel. Donna, would you please call roll?
Chris Jamrose, here. Drew Cash?
Here.
Woody Emmons?
Here.
Sam Cressy?
Here.
Drew Johnson?
Here.
Randy Frost?
Here.
Kathy White-Gaddage?
Mike Portalese?
Here.
Chris Torri.
Here. We have a quorum, and there's plenty of us here, and we're ready to dig in. We've got a very full agenda, like I had mentioned, so let's keep presentations concise and clear. We do all of our speaking at the podium, and when you come up, if you could leave your name and address very clearly for Donna to take down in the notes. Patience for those attending online. There will be people online. It always creates a little confusion and a little back and forth, so bear with us, and we'll get through all of that. The previous month's minutes were October. Were there any corrections or additions to those? Nope. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
That sounded like everybody, so we'll approve those minutes. Is there any conflict of interest on any agenda items tonight with the commissioners? Nope? Alright. Well, this brings us to the first item on the agenda. We have petition 25-17. This will go to the council because it is establishing zoning, so we're just an advisory quote, or just an advisory, actually, oh yeah, hold on, that one does go to the council. Okay, I got confused. This one will go to the council, so we'll just be giving a recommendation. A request submitted by Terry L. Segerman and Kathy Peterson, devicees of trust, requesting to annex and establish zoning as R3 multifamily residential for property located at the southeast corner of North Fur Road and Cleveland Road for a proposed apartment complex. Hi.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jeff Ballard with Dan Charter and Associates. I am representing the property owner, Terry Segerman and Kathy Peterson, and also the contingent developer, which is SC Bodnar Company out of Carmel, Indiana. We're here tonight to request annexation and establish zoning for an 18.99 acre site, and also ask for approval of their preliminary site plan. The property is located on the southeast corner of Fur Road and Old Cleveland Road. East University Drive terminates into the signal intersection there at Fur Road. And for additional reference, the toll road borders a portion of the southeast boundary of the property. Also, as part of the 18.99 acres, the annexation will include 2.6 acres of public right-of-way, currently serving as a retention basin for improvements made to Fur Road and Cleveland, Fur and Cleveland Road intersection and the roadway that was done some time ago. The basin will be maintained and continue in that purpose, but also be expanded for the use as stormwater storage for the new development. And there's the site plan there. The new development project will include six three-story apartment buildings with a total of 216 residential units. There'll also be a central community building with amenities for the residents. Currently, the site plan is showing 368 parking spaces, which is 44 more spaces than required for the 216 units. And you can also see, obviously, there's circulation and parking there, and we're showing the existing retention basin. The current zoning is R3 single-family in the Sancho County unincorporated area. We're requesting a zoning classification of R3 multifamily for the purpose of the use. As you can see, two primary access into the site will be at the East University Drive and Fur Road intersection. Dan Charter and Associates and the developer will work with Mishawaka Engineering to determine if any modifications are necessary to existing roadways and/or the traffic signal. I'm sure there will be. Part of the southeast corner, you can see that gray area there, it is a wetland. It's delineated as a wetland. A delineation report has been completed. That was utilized to design the access into the site there. So, the goal, and so far, we're able to determine that less than a quarter acre of wetland will be disturbed. The developer will continue to work with the appropriate permitting agencies to ensure compliance is met with that wetland, so if we need to do any mitigation, that'll be taken care of. That's the short and sweet of it. If there's anything I can help to answer questions for, I'd be happy to do that.
I just want to clarify some of my confusion that I had when I announced this. So, there'll be an annexation and a zoning. Both of those go to the council, so they're all combined into this one petition.
Correct.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room or online wishing to speak in favor of petition Hearing none. Is there anybody in the room wishing to speak in opposition to petition Is there anybody online wishing to speak in opposition to petition 25-17? Mr. City Planner, is there any additional information?
No additional information.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and if there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion on this petition.
Motion to accept petition 25-17.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Mike Portalese was the second. Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamrose? Yes. Drew Cash?
Yes.
Woody Emmons?
Yes.
Sam Cressy?
Yes.
Drew Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Frost?
Yes.
Mike Portalese?
Yes.
Chris Torri?
Yes, and petition 25-17 will move to the council with a favorable rating from the Plan Commission. Thank you for the presentation. Moving right along, we have petition 25-18. This will also go to the council for final approval. A request submitted by Habitat for Humanity requesting to rezone property at the southwest corner of McKinley and Fur Road from R4 manufactured home residential to S2 planned unit development for single-family, attached single-family, and multifamily and a clubhouse. Hi.
Good evening. Chris Godlewski, Abbott Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. I represent Jim Williams, the president and CEO of Habitat for Humanity, and Mary Ann Cusado from the School of Architecture from the University of Notre Dame. This development is slated for a rezoning to PUD because of the multiple types of housing types. One single zoning district can't allow for the variety of housing, the attached, detached, stacked flats, and then the specific layout, certain right-of-way widths, alleys, backloaded with garages, kind of just a variety, very unique development. So, this plan came from a partnership from Notre Dame and Habitat for Humanity to come up with this concept plan, to come up with something really, really unique to serve the community for Habitat. And what you see in the application is just kind of an outcropping of those design standards that really fit this development. So, what you see in the setbacks, lot sizes, signage, heights, public-private roads, all that is based on what you see in this diagram here. I know the staff report was positive, and we appreciate that. Coming out of this, after it goes through the rezoning process into council, we'll be doing some plating and final construction plans, but before we get to that point, we've got to handle the rezoning to handle the housing needs. Should mention, there's one other thing. There will be a clubhouse at the northeast corner of this property as well. Internal sidewalks, some five-foot, some eight-foot paths, so it'll really be a really unique neighborhood. And if there's any specific questions about the design, Mary Ann could help, or anything Habitat for Humanity, Jim can answer that. If there's any other technical questions, I can answer them.
Thank you. And keep in mind, what's on the table for us to consider tonight is just the rezone from R4 to S2.
Correct.
Yep. Any questions for Mr. Godlewski?
Just a real simple clarification. I think our thing says the corner Fur, but I believe this is actually McKinley and Burkitt, not Fur, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, correct. Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay, yep.
Yep.
Oh, good catch. Good catch, Donna. We're going to need to just change that. Thank you. Any other questions? Woody?
I got a couple of questions for you. First one is a clarification. Well, I should, before I get into that, what is the timeline to remove all those trailers out there where you're going to propose this development?
I believe there's several residents left over, but maybe Jim might be a better person to answer that question.
Jim Williams, president and CEO of Habitat of Sancho County. First of all, thank you for your support of Habitat. We really appreciate it. We are now officially residents of the city of Mishawaka. Our new office is at 524 East McKinley. But with regard to this property, which is just a few blocks away from our office, there were, as you know, 34 residents still there out of 115 lots, and we have helped rehome 30 of them, and there's four left. And so, actually, we helped 31. There's three left. And I'm told by the person, the company, Bradley Company, that's helping us with that process, that two of them have keys to their next location, and there's a plan for the third, so we're almost there. But we are purposely showing as much grace and giving as much time as possible to these families. Originally, we gave them a six-month notice. That essentially is turning into one year, but we're okay with that, because that was our first priority to make sure that they were taken care of. So, the structures won't come down until we get those families rehomed, which I'm hoping that will be done by December 1st, and then we have to go through a bidding process for which company will actually do that. But I am just as anxious as you are to see the visual change that's going to take place when we are able to do that, but that's the best I can tell you at this point. We do have just three more families to rehome.
Are they going to be destroyed, all those homes in there, or are they going to be sold?
We have some people that have expressed interest. I think there's only a handful that have any value whatsoever. As long as it doesn't slow the process too much, we are willing to find a new home or some materials if people think they can make use of it with, carefully, like I said, if it doesn't stretch out the process too long.
Okay. Well, I'm for that. We've been waiting a long time for that corner to be redeveloped in one way or another.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, this will answer that problem. Also, in reading here, you've got single-family, which I understand, which is standalone homes.
Correct.
For single-family. And attached family, is that kind of like a condo, when it's attached, single-family?
Townhouses.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And then a multifamily, is that same thing as a condo, but?
Duplex. And Habitat is about ownership, homeownership, so as much as possible, we want all of these to be an ownership opportunity, but the truth is, we don't know the market demand exactly. We think with a good guess that people are going to like the price point, the location, and the whole development. A plan B would be to lease a few of those if we have to, but we're trying to have all of those to be homeownership opportunities. And yes, in some cases, it would have to be a condo arrangement.
Okay. And the proposed time, once you clear the land, and it's ready for development, how long will it take to build this community? Now, when you build it, are you taking it in sections? Are you taking it by the house, by when it's sold?
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
Yeah, okay, you have all these facilities, all these homes, whether it be single-family, whether it be attached, single-family, multifamily. Okay, when you start your process of building this community, how is that going to be developed? I mean, is it with the houses that somebody has purchased, right? Because I know there's a process that they have to go out and work and everything like that.
Right.
And it's not a project like we had where you built 100 homes in four weeks, you know?
Right. There's several parts to that answer. One is, we are going to take it in phases, okay, to try to just be practical about how we approach it, but we also are anticipating receiving Ready 2.0 money, which requires us to have these houses, the whole thing done by the end of 2028. So, there is an expedited process, and it's not going to be the traditional Habitat build for all of those. Now, the 15, is it, Mary Ann, is it 15 single-family detached? Okay. Those Habitat, we can do our traditional builds, but there's some of this, for the first time, we're going to use a general contractor, and so that ability to build that quicker, they're going to help us do that.
Okay, so you'll be building some of them, about the three types, all at the same time?
Correct. And then also, in terms of the different types of units, we want for 60% of this project, approximately 60 to 70, to be Habitat families, but we want this to be a mixed-income development. So, there's going to be 30 to 40% of these units available to anybody who would like to live there, and we're very excited about that, just like the Fields at Highland. That's how we develop that as well.
Okay. So, those ones that are built by the contractor, will those people have to go to school and put time in, building?
The ones that are part of the Habitat program, yes, but the ones that I'm calling market rate, no. They do not go through the Habitat program. They just go to a traditional mortgage process.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Questions?
I've got a-
One more question, sir.
For the 30 to 40% of homes that are, you called them market-rate homes?
Yes.
You said there's a possibility that you would rent those. Would you then retain ownership, and you would have tenants yourself?
When I say that, that's only if we have to, okay? That's if we are surprised, and the market does not, the demand is not what we think it's going to be. But yes, I say that because I can't guarantee that I know exactly what the market demand is.
Thank you.
But that also means we would retain control of the aesthetics, and that's very important to us. We look at our developments as a billboard for Habitat for 30 years or more, and so we want to make sure that we have covenants in place, like we do at the Fields at Highland, and that we have a plan, and I can tell you, we are very conscientious about that.
Thank you. And for those same homes, will you sell to LLCs, or are these to be sold strictly to homeowners?
Yes, to homeowners. Good question. Thank you.
Other questions? Nope. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room or online wishing to speak in favor of petition Hearing none. Is there anybody in the room wishing to speak in opposition to petition 25-18? Is there anybody online wishing to speak in opposition to petition 25-18? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. If there's no additional information, then I'll take a motion on 25-18.
I make a motion to approve petition 25-18.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamrose? Yes. Drew Cash?
Yes.
Woody Emmons?
Yes.
Sam Cressy?
Yes.
Drew Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Frost?
Yes.
Mike Portalese?
Yes.
Chris Torri?
Yes, and petition 25-18 will move to the council with a favorable rating from the Plan Commission. Moving along, we have petition 25-19. This also has two components in it. Both components will be resolved with the council. They'll have the final vote on this. It is 25-19, a request submitted by Wilson Realty LLC requesting to annex and establish zoning as C1 general commercial for property located at the southwest corner of State Route 23 and Toll Road to allow for landscaping contractor.
Good evening. Chris Godlewski, Abbott Marsh, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend. This petition complements a petition that was at the BZA earlier today for outside storage. If and when this property is annexed into the city of Mishawaka as a C1, he'll have outdoor display in the front yard of his materials. And I should step away for a second. I'm representing the broker, John Pericini, and the prospective buyer, Richard Carroll here. So, Richard Carroll would like to have relocate his business to this site, and part of his business, he needs to have finished display. And one of the questions that came up in the BZA meeting was, what does that display look like? Well, in front of the house, it might be a little fountain with some pavers and a path of a setting that might be constructed at someone else's home offsite. So, he's creating an area of what the end product could look like. So, that is the display. It's not necessarily storage materials of pallets of material and things like that. It's a, in essence, it's a finished product of what might be shown, so people driving down State Route 23 can see what that looks like. So, yeah, the staff had a number of comments yet to come, and I know we have to go through a site plan process for this, but probably wait through until the annexation gets a little further along. And I know the use variance also has to be, wait until it's fully annexed into the city. So, the variance was approved, recommended to the council favorably, and I gave you just an overview of the site here. I can answer any detailed questions. If I can't answer anything, Richard can about the business, or John can give you some information about the property.
I can add some comments, being on the BZA board and going through this. One of the things that I was concerned about was, you know, if we establish this outdoor storage and it changes, it could be a mound of dirt later, right? So, what's nice is that in the actual docket and the list of requirements from our staff, it has a listing of what you can and can't do in that area, which was acceptable. So, I appreciate you going through that detail and what that showcase area is meant to do and the purpose of it. Just some additional information from the BZA meeting. Is there any other questions for Mr. Godlewski?
Is this looking to be like a retail location or showcase, or I guess, what's the overall purpose?
This will be his only location, and maybe, Richard, if you want to explain your business and what you do specifically, he could probably give you a better idea about that.
Great, thank you.
I can answer any technical questions.
Good evening. Richard Carroll, 53223 West Cedar Lake Drive, Granger, Indiana, 46530. So, no retail sales. We're a contractor, so outdoor living, design-build. We design your backyard, and we build it. More of just a design studio for potential clients to come in, see, feel, touch things that we offer, you know, have offices for our staff, and in the back prop, you have room for our storage materials, but the upfront would be the outdoor display.
So, you say storage of materials, stone, dirt, mulch, traditional?
Correct.
Okay.
But not in what they're asking for.
Correct. Yeah, fine.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you for the presentation. Is there anybody else in the room or online wishing to speak in favor of petition 25-19? Hearing none. Is there, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Pericini, I'm sorry.
No worries. John Pericini, Cobal Banker Commercial, 633 Windy Cove Court, Mishawaka. Want to hand out these. I'll make it brief. I just want to kind of give you just a little background. This parcel owned by Mr. Wilson. It's been for sale a long time. It's kind of a tough parcel. We annexed, which many of you were part of. Next to it was the All Secure Storage, so all that property to the, kind of the south, is in the city. And this has been a kind of a tough site, you know, hard access, but as you noticed, it backs up against the old Superfund site where they cleaned it up and along the toll road, so it kind of made a natural fit to get into the city. So, I just wanted to give you that area so you kind of get an idea. It's really, kind of fits in pretty nice, and this is really a great use, because we've, there's been a struggle getting somebody on that, because it's kind of a specific use of the size of the property, and I think we've spent quite a bit of time on it, and Mr. Carroll, he's got a good plan. It'll be a nice addition to the city. Any questions, sir?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of petition 25-19? Hearing none. Is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition to petition 25-19? Is there any additional information, Mr. City Planner?
Information.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll take a motion if there's not further discussion on petition 25-19.
Make a motion. We send a favorable recommendation to petition 25-19 to the council?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamrose? Yes. Drew Cash?
Yes.
Woody Emmons?
Yes.
Sam Cressy?
Yes.
Drew Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Frost?
Yes.
Mike Portalese?
Yes.
Chris Torri?
Yes, and petition 25-19, both the annex and zoning, will have a favorable recommendation going to the council from the Plan Commission. Thank you. Moving along, we have petition 25-20. This will also go to the council for final resolution because it is a zoning change, a request submitted by Walmart Stores, Inc., number 12678/6315, requesting to rezone part of 316 West Indian Ridge Boulevard from C1 general commercial to C10 filling station commercial. I believe there's somebody online to present this petition.
Yes, sir. I'm here. My name is Gabriel Loth with Carlson Consulting Engineers, representing Walmart for this meeting.
Great. Can we get your last name one more time?
Loth, L-O-T-H.
Thank you for that. Tell us all about what you want to do.
Of course. I'll keep it brief here, so you've got a full agenda. So, this, we are wanting to rezone a portion of this lot right now from C1 general commercial to C1 filling station commercial. The goal here is to bring a Walmart fuel station to the city of Mishawaka here, and as you can see, there's our preliminary site plan there. We've worked with planning staff for a little, about a year at this point, just nailing down the exact location that they would want to see this located at, and exactly how they would want to see this. So, we've gone back and forth. I think we have a good layout here, and with that, we want to rezone a portion so that we can have this brought to the city.
Thank you for the presentation. Is there any questions?
So, my question centered around the well field. So, how does this particular property sit within the, like, the capture zone for, with the Judy Creek well field? Is it a protected area? What are the boundaries around that? Because we've had some concern in the past about fuel stations in a, when it's a similar range, possibly contaminating the well field.
I'm going to have our executive director come up and address that, so we can all be on the same page here.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. Ken Prince, Director of Planning and Community Development. This proposed location is outside of the five-year time of travel, so when you look at the Judy Creek well field specifically, is the closest one to the site. That is an operation. The Gumwood well field, as you know, is being closed, so that was not taken into account relative to the request. So, when we- So, when we adopted the land use regulations relative to well fields, gas station fueling centers, the underground tanks really is what we're talking about, are prohibited within the one-year time of travel and are potentially a conditional use within the five-year time of travel. This site is outside of that five-year time of travel.
Thank you for that clarification.
You mentioned the Gumwood well field is being closed?
Yes.
Could you just quickly elaborate on that, when that is occurring?
Yes, it's basically, it is being run very sparingly at this point in time. So, it's not even operating on a regular basis. They just have done that in the past to keep, as repairs were happening to the new water tower, there was a potential need to run it, which is why they kept it and they didn't close it right away. But it may in fact already have wells that have been closed. I haven't kept up on that and perhaps our city engineer could.
Closed?
It's closed. Okay, so.
Thank you.
There we go.
Great, thank you, Mr. Prince. We'll go back to the presenter. Any other questions on 25?
Since you're up here, Ken, I have one more. No, I have one more on it. Doesn't this, in this effect, so if we approve this, it's going to pre-approve the use? If we agree to, if we see it in the best interest to rezone this, that pre-approves the use for a fuel station?
So, I guess to better clarify, the zoning in and of itself, yes, permits the use on the property. So, that is what is being requested and that's what you're reviewing tonight.
But it's not a pass fail. This goes to the council for final.
Sure, I understand.
Yep. Thank you.
Sure.
We'll go back to the presenter. Is there any other questions for the presenter on 25-20?
I have a question.
Oh, yep. Woody?
On your proposed gas station?
Can I get you to get on that microphone a little closer because he can't hear?
Where you have the location on that corner there, in and out, I've got a couple of questions. Is that going to pose a problem of coming in and out of Indian Ridge Boulevard?
We don't intend for there to be any problem there, especially since this site has three access drives off of Indian Ridge Boulevard. You have two chances coming off of the highway there to turn in. And so, I think that's one of the reasons why we work with planning staff to get this moved farther down to not cause any traffic concerns there.
Okay, and number two, what's your hours of operation?
Our hours of operation are the same as the Walmart Super Center, I believe, in this area. I'd have to get back with you on that. Off the top of my head, I believe it is from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. But like I said, that's just off the top of my head. I'm not 100% sure on that.
Is that seven days a week? Okay, and another question is on your gas station, are you going to have exposed storage out in front of your location?
Can you clarify that a little more?
Well, say bags of ground cover, salt, whatever, are you going to have outside storage?
I believe on the kiosk there, it's shown there's a gated area on the back of the fuel station, or on the kiosk, sorry. That area would probably be, if there's any sort of outside storage, that area would be where that would be taking place. But like I said, it's a gated area.
Okay, that was my next question, is it going to be gated? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to have any kind of landscaping around this facility since it's kind of out in the open?
There are a couple, as you can see, there's a couple of curved islands. We're going to put what landscaping we can fit in there, but kind of given where this is located and what's around us and what curved islands we're taking in, we'll do our best with landscaping there.
The reason I'm asking is because you've got parking and everything from your Walmart store and everything. I didn't know how close to your gas station are you going to have parking for this Walmart? Or is it going to be cordoned off to where you have a space in between your proposed gas station and the parking for Walmart?
I believe it's the intention to kind of use any excess parking that the fuel station may not require as parking for the Walmart Super Center as well.
Okay, but you're not going to have any kind of standard or any kind of gating or anything like that to separate your gas station from your parking lot?
No, sir.
I have a question that may involve Mr. Prince, if it is. I know on the corner of Main Street and Indian Ridge, there's a pretty sizable retention basin for water. Is there any issues, should there be a spill of groundwater contamination? Because that whole front area is designed to contain water.
I guess, Shaq, could you put up the aerial? As you can see, looking at the site, there's actually three retention ponds and they're all interconnected. Every site, so every gas station that we've approved has a requirement to retain stormwater on the property. So, from, for example, in our well field, in our wellhead protection ordinance, it is better to have an open pond than it is to have underground storage because then oil typically floats on the water. You can see it, you can smell it. If it's underground, it's meant to infiltrate the water. So, the ponds are actually better than what would be an underground drywall system for that. And so, yes, if a spill happens, it potentially goes into the pond, but it's also more readily accessible and it's easier cleanup than if it is going underground.
Great, thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to questions for the petitioner. Any other questions on petition 25-20? No other questions? Thank you for your presentation. Is there anybody else in the room or online wishing to speak in favor of petition 25-20? Hearing none, is there anybody in the room or online wishing to speak in opposition to petition 25-20? Hearing none, is there any remonstrance letters or additional information, Mr. City Planner?
Additional information?
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. And if there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion on 25-20.
Make a motion, let me send a favorable recommendation to the council for petition 25-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamrose.
Yes.
Drew Cash.
Yes.
Woody Emmons.
Yes.
Sam Cressy.
Yes.
Drew Johnson.
Yes.
Randy Frost.
Yes.
Mike Portalese.
Yes.
Chris Torde.
Yes, and petition 25-20 will move to the council with a favorable rating from the Plan Commission. Thank you for the presentation and your patience online. I appreciate that. Moving right along, we got plat 25-6, a request submitted by Midwest Shooting Center Managed Services seeking LLC, LLC seeking approval for the one lot Midwest Shooting Center Minor Subdivision.
Hi, this is Chris Sutton from Metra Consulting Associates. We were the engineers on this project.
Great, welcome. And could we get your address for the record?
It's 4, sorry, 45345, 5 Mile Road, Plymouth, Michigan.
Great, tell us about, tell us about this plat, please.
So, this is a development for a shooting center. It is, we'll be having a parking lot in the area. We also be connecting the private road that is, this is at 3717 Bremen Highway, by the way. But the private drive over by the Wendy's, we will be extending that along with this project to have a direct connection to the storage facility that is directly south. This parcel is right in between the two areas. We also be adding a retention pond for this, the parcel. We have submitted plans to the city. We've received comments as well and we are currently working through those to get those approved through the city, the engineering department, and the other departments that have provided comments for us.
Great, and we have Mr. Pericini up here. Do you want to complete the presentation before we get into questions?
Yeah, let me, I'm John Pericini, Coldwell Banker Commercial, 633 Wendy Cove Court, Mishawaka. I'm going to save time and address 05, 06, and 07. Basically, they are in conjunction. Brought those again to kind of give you an idea. This has been a long, if some of you remember, we've been on this for years on this Bremen Highway project. And the Veldman family who has the storage facility that's out there, they got about a half, over a half million dollars invested to get this Meyer Drive in and this road extended. It's been extended, as you can see by these, the aerial and also that, by each. It started out with Taco Bell, then Wendy's, and then now the Midwest is going to extend it through. They were kind enough, they came in town, we met with the neighbors, we had a kind of, it's always been kind of an issue with that Elmwood Drive. And that's, if you see in the orange there, that road was the state access road that's getting blocked off. And actually, our agreement was that Veldmans had improved that, spent quite a bit of dollars improving that temporarily. And so, we're finally, they're going to gate, like a breakaway gate there. And so, hoping all this traffic now that comes out of the warehouse will go through that new road and out to Meyer Drive. So, it was a great cooperation between them and the city, engineering, the mayor. It's been, it was a long process. So, I just wanted you to get an idea how that's going to work out and hopefully it alleviates, gets all that traffic back to the light and to Meyer Drive and, like I said, and those people, you know, we won't get that out to Elmwood as much as, you know, it was, now it's not as tempting to do it. So, we're hoping it alleviates that. So, that's kind of a, he'll probably get into the final site plan and the rest of the details, but I thought I'd just give you that quick scenario of how this thing's going to end up.
So, questions for Mr. Sutton or Mr. Pericini on this presentation?
I have a question. This sits fairly close to a resident that's north of the site. And then, to the west, there's some homes.
No, those are gone. Those will be gone in this. Everything on Bremen Highway, the Veldmans own both of them. In fact, they're vacant and we've had issues with homeless getting in and breaking them in and they're going, all that will be gone. There'll be no homes left on Bremen Highway.
What about Elmwood there?
Elmwood you have, nothing's changed in there, but you have, if you see the layout there, we have a parking lot and then there'll be buffered behind it. So, anything to the west of that access road will be the residential, to the east will be all commercial. Yeah, and Pineards, who, they have the last parcel there, he's actually, I've been in conversation with them for a long time. So, eventually, they will probably sell the property, but he was in favor of, he thought it was important to get that road blocked off back there so the traffic wouldn't go out there.
Yeah, that was my question, if he had any resistance to this shooting range. Because they do have a tendency to, I know I've gone to Kodiak, I've gone to Range USA and there is a tendency to hear gunfire to a certain extent.
Well, we had that question, I thought, I learned this myself. This is a block building with a bunker block building built inside of it. They capture all the shells, the powder, the noise. Because the owner, he even admitted when, he's just about seventh or eighth one, the first one that they built, wherever it's at, they noticed that and they wanted to improve it. You know, he's mentioned that to the neighbors. And so, the general contractor explained how this is like a vault inside a vault. So, there's probably going to be, we don't, they're not anticipating any noise on the outside. And there's quite a bit of buffer in the backend there too. So, it was pretty, it was an interesting conversation because I was always curious myself on, I mean, I never know, we've had Councilman Benicki, he has them in his district and he has said, you know, he has two, he has the one, the new one there on University and he said he's never had no issues, no complaints, anything on that one either, so.
Okay, we're still on questions for the presenters, Mr. Sutton and Mr. Pericini. What other questions do we have? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the room or online wishing to speak in favor of plat 25-06? Hearing none, is there anybody in the room or online wishing to speak in opposition to 25-06? Is there any additional information, Mr. City Planner?
Information.
With that, I'll close the public hearing and if there's no discussion, I'll take a motion.
I just have one question.
Sure.
And Donna, this is probably to you. The information that went out to neighbors, did it note the meeting night is tonight or last night? Do you know?
It was kind of mixed, but I haven't gotten any calls regarding questions about that at all. No one's called to question the date.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great question. I was wondering that same thing too, that we have somebody who's not showing up because they were confused or showed up last night, so.
I did.
Well, yeah.
We had a meeting with the council, with the neighbors in that, prior to meetings with Mr. Pericini. So, we had half a dozen, a little bit more people come into the council room and discuss questions and concerns that they had and that with the owners, they came in from Ohio. And so, we had a very productive meeting and they answered, John and the owner answered a lot of the questions. There was a few people that were still a little bit upset, but I would think, and John might confirm that, that the majority of those people in that meeting accepted it.
Most of the issues are this county road.
They'd like it blocked off, but everything's in the county. I don't think anybody in the city, I'm actually going to speak for the city for a second. I don't think anybody objected to blocking it off, but it's a county road. So, there's nothing, you know, the city could do. And we encourage them to contact their county councilmen or, they're like the officials to try to get that done. Or if it was a matter of speeding, to contact the county police. But most of their issues are the county road, you know, and there's not much. And the cities went to huge extremes to get this, you know, you remember there was no traffic light there. That Elmwood came out on Bremen Highway. So, you got all this improvement with the traffic light or lane and all that been improved to detract all that traffic. So, but unfortunately, I think we were all in agreement that, you know, nobody was against it, but it's just, it's a county in the county. We approached them, I think, Chris, if you remember, I think back in the day, we approached a county about it when we first did this and they were not interested. And I think some of the problem is, is safety with police and fire because if you block that off, you know, the closest police and fire to the neighborhood is really Mishawaka. So, if something, and they would, you know, they're not going to turn away a fire. So, if there was a tragedy or something and that road's blocked, you know, the county, you know, the township fire department's going to be, it's going to be a tough drive. So, of course, one of the neighbors said, well, we haven't had a fire in 45 years. They go, well, that's the wrong thing to say. But anyway, we have met, spent a lot of time with them and addressed, you know, it was a pretty, pretty good meeting. Most council members were there also, so.
Thank you for clarifying the Plan Commission questions. I appreciate that.
I just have one comment, John, and I really appreciate you meeting with the neighbors. I can't tell you how many times things like this come before us, that people haven't met with the neighbors and I just value the fact that you guys took the time to do that.
Thank you. I talked to the owners because they told me they'd never had to do that. And I said, well.
May I get you on the microphone?
The owners, they were kind of surprised and I said, well, you're going to have to postpone it, come in town. And he said, well, we've never had to do that. I go, but this is Mishawaka and the council requests it and we meet with the neighbors, you know. We always give them the, doesn't mean it's always going to go in their favor, but you always give them an opportunity to hear them. So, I appreciate that, though.
Thank you, thank you. So, the public hearing is still closed, but we're on discussion among the commissioners here to this. Is there any more comments or discussion?
If I may offer something?
You know what? I think the public hearing's closed, so unless it's a direct question from the commissioners, we'll just have you hold off.
That's fine, I'll just represent the owners, that's all.
Yep. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion on plat 25-06.
Motion to accept plat number 2506.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. The second was Randy. Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamrose.
Yes.
Drew Cash.
Yes.
Woody Emmons.
Yes.
Sam Cressy.
Yes.
Drew Johnson.
Yes.
Randy Frost.
Yes.
Mike Portalese.
Yes.
Chris Torde.
Yes, and 25-06 passes. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the presentation. Moving right along, we got replat twenty-five dash ten, a request submitted by Penns LLC seeking approval of the two-lot Merrfield Avenue Industrial Park replat number three. Hi.
Good evening. The petition before you is to take the Penns LLC property where Penns Products is located there, at the northeast corner of Merrfield and St. Jerome. They have a contingent purchaser on the industrial building right there. Purchaser does not want the vacant parcel to, part, part, north part of that which is vacant, so we're going through the process of creating it as a two-lot subdivision here. Penns will retain ownership on the north piece, and then the contingent purchaser will follow through with the purchase of the industrial building to the south, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Lang on this replat. None, thank you for the presentation. Is there anybody in the room or online wishing to speak in favor of replat twenty-five dash ten? Hearing none, is there anybody in the room or online wishing to speak in opposition to replat twenty-five dash ten? Hearing none, is there any additional information?
Yes, we can have a letter of support. This says, as owner of nine oh three St. Jerome, I have no problem with the proposed changes to the lot across the street. I won't be able to attend the meeting scheduled for November twelfth because of a prior commitment, but I'm totally in favor of granting their request for the replating of that lot. Signed, Gregory Pucci, member of Pucci Properties LLC.
Great, it's always nice to get a letter of support, that comes in very, very handy. So thank you for sharing that information. If there's no additional information, I'll close the public hearing, and I will take a motion on replat twenty-five dash ten.
I move to approve twenty-five dash ten.
Second.
Randy and Woody, we have a motion and a second, Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamros?
Yes.
Drew Cash?
Yes.
Woody Emmons?
Yes.
Sam Cressy?
Yes.
Drew Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Frost?
Yes.
Mike Portalese?
Yes.
Chris Torri?
Yes, and replat twenty-five dash ten passes. Thank you for the presentation. Moving into a design review, DR, Design Review twenty-five dash zero nine. A request submitted by Healthcare requesting, Health, Health Link requesting a design review waiver to allow a wood fence as a dumpster enclosure on four twenty West Fourth Street. Is there somebody here in the room or somebody online to present this design review?
Yes, I am online, my name is Robin Witty, I am with Facet Architecture at three zero two Tyler Street in Lepore, Indiana. I'm the architect for this.
Would you be so kind to repeat your name and spell your last name?
Yeah, it's Robin Witty, W-I-T-T-E.
Thank you for that. Okay, tell us about your design review and what you want to do.
Sure, Health Link has a property that they have a medical clinic in right now. At this property, they have an existing dumpster corral that's not in the best location, and they actually need a little bit larger corral for another dumpster, so we're suggesting that we slightly modify the location, essentially rotating it so that the garbage trucks have easier access to the corral. Yes, there's the drawing right there. And we're suggesting that a wood fence enclosure be installed to hide the dumpsters.
Thank you, so the way it sets presently, it's, the dumpster does not have anything around it, right? Today, it's just an open dumpster?
I believe it does have an enclosure. Joan, can you correct me on this? Joan, with Health Link is also on.
Hello, I'm Joan Bondi with.
Yep, I'm sorry, go ahead, you were doing it right. Go ahead.
Joan Bondi with Health Link, it has, it does not have a gate, it has three sides enclosed without a gate on it.
Yeah, and the way it's situated, when the dumpsters are put back, they're essentially half sticking out of that partial enclosure, so it's kind of an eyesore at this point, we really just want to make it look a lot nicer and easier for the garbage trucks to access.
And the old enclosure, and will all be removed, right, and?
Correct, it's an existing wood enclosure, so we're requesting that we put a new one in kind.
A new one?
In a slightly modified location.
So you wouldn't be reusing the old one?
Nope, we wouldn't, it would be new.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Witty, or Ms. Witty? Yes, Mr. Emmens.
Yes, on your dumpster, on that fence, how high is that fence gonna be?
High wire, it's at seven feet tall.
And is it solid?
Yes.
Okay, so you can't see through the fence then, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and when you say wooden fence, is it gonna have some character to the fence, or is it just gonna be wood slats?
It's wood slat, that's what they have right now, so we're suggesting it was something similar, so no, no fancy details or anything, it's a pretty basic wood fence.
No decorative tops to them or anything, just?
No. Yeah, no decorative top.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you for the presentation. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of Design Review twenty-five dash zero nine? Hearing none, is there anybody in the room or online wishing to speak in opposition to Design Review twenty-five dash zero nine? Is there any additional information, Mr. City Planner?
No additional information.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll take a motion on twenty-five dash zero nine.
I make a motion to approve petition, excuse me, Design Review twenty-five zero nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamros?
Yes.
Drew Cash?
Yes.
Woody Emmons?
Yes.
Sam Cressy?
Yes.
Drew Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Frost?
Yes.
Mike Portalese?
Yes.
Chris Torri?
Yes, and Design Review twenty-five dash zero nine passes. Thank you for the presentation. Next, we move into our site plans, there'll be no public hearing for site plans. Site Plan twenty-five dash zero five, a request submitted by March Campbell and Carolyn Adams seeking final site plan approval for construction of a new mini storage unit facility located at two fifteen and two seventeen South Elder Road. Hi.
Hi, that's a typo, it's Mark Campbell. The petition before you is something that had been submitted well over five years ago, just before COVID hit. COVID hit, the whole world kind of came to an end or to a screeching halt, this project was put on hold due to funds to be able to continue forward with it. In the meantime, here we are, five years later. I had previously submitted this as a Lang Feeny project, now that it's a, it's a Whitman has purchased my firm, we are in the process of going through and taking care of all of the items that the engineering department and planning department had, there's about a page list of things there that was of concern with the previous plan. The guidelines have changed, the erosion control stuff has all changed from when it was previously submitted, and we're gonna update all of those to comply with the city standards as they, as they are today. So with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have with regards to the configuration of the site there.
Thank you, questions for Terry Lang?
Do you recall any issues from the previous presentation? I wasn't here at that time, anything that came up five years ago that?
There, the, there was a meeting about two months ago for the variance request that had to be done on it, a couple of the questions that was posed at the Board of Zoning Appeals was concerned is, was there going to be, you know, people living in these storage units, of which, the storage units are only gonna have electric, so it's not gonna be anything that has water or facilities or anything like that. The little house that's there is gonna be converted into the office, it's about the size of my garage, and had been a house for as long as I can remember, and I've lived out in the East End for fifty years, but at this point, it's gonna be converted into an office for it right there, and that way they've got security onsite for being able to keep an eye on it, and all of the items that the city had asked for will be updated on our plans to comply with that.
Will it be fenced and security and?
Pardon?
Will it be fenced and lit?
That was one of the items that was part of the, the Board of Zoning Appeals portion of it, the landscaping portion was part of the petition to not have landscaping, the owners of the property are negotiating with the adjacent property owner to the south for purchase of that, to maybe, to be able to expand that in the future, but with regards, the fencing around the perimeter portion will be contained around the buildings, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's nine-foot fence.
Yep, you got a comment?
No, I'm just talking with Portalese, that it's a nine-foot fence.
Nine-foot fence.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions for Mr. Lang on this? No? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on Site Plan twenty-five dash zero five, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion and we approve Site Plan twenty-five zero five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamros?
Yes.
Drew Cash?
Yes.
Woody Emmons?
Yes.
Sam Cressy?
Yes.
Drew Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Frost?
Yes.
Mike Portalese?
Yes.
Chris Torri?
Yes, and Site Plan twenty-five dash zero five passes. Thank you for the presentation. Moving along, we have Site Plan twenty-five dash zero six, a request submitted by CS Realty Ventures LLC seeking final site plan approval for construction of a new twenty-four thousand six hundred square foot warehouse slash storage building located at three five two one North Home Street. Hi.
Hi. I'm Ben Stanley with Surveying and Mapping, I'm representing Zimmerman Construction as well as Clover Machine Movers or CS Realty Ventures, I am joined today by Tony Berkshire from Zimmerman Construction as well. Yeah, the request for the approval, we request the approval of the submitted site plans located on the west side of North Home Street. We did receive a few tech review comments that I believe we've addressed in the plans that you now have, the most significant of which had to do with fire hydrants, and so we, we believe we've addressed all of those, and so I'm willing to answer or attempt to answer any questions you guys have.
Questions on this site plan?
Just for my own education, it says that, engineering says there is no sanitary service needed with this project. What does that mean?
It means they say they do not require any sanitary service.
No sewer, is that what you're saying?
Right, no sewer or water.
Okay.
Maybe for fire protection, that'd be about it, for water. So we make them, when they make that statement, we make them put that on the plat.
Thank you.
This is a strictly warehouse addition, so it's only for the storage of machinery.
Thank you, any other questions? No? Thank you for the presentation. With that, if there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion on twenty-five dash zero six.
I make a motion that we approve Site Plan twenty-five oh six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamros?
Yes.
Drew Cash?
Yes.
Woody Emmons?
Yes.
Sam Cressy?
Yes.
Drew Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Frost?
Yes.
Mike Portalese?
Yes.
Chris Torri?
Yes, and Site Plan twenty-five dash zero seven passes. Moving on to the last item on the agenda, it's another Site Plan twenty-five dash zero eight, a request submitted by John. I missed one?
Yeah, we just passed twenty-five.
Oh, I checked off the wrong one, all right, well, we'll go back. We'll go back, we're almost to the last one, almost there. I need to not be in a rush, I even have my glasses on. Site Plan twenty-five dash zero seven, a request submitted by Midwest Shooting Center Managed Services LLC seeking final site plan approval for construction of a new thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety square foot indoor shooting range located at three seven one seven and three seven two nine Bremen Highway. Is there somebody online to present this, I imagine?
Yes, this is Chris Sutton from Metrick Consulting Associates again. We kind of talked about it a little bit earlier, about the, the shooting center and the site features that were in there with the new parking lot, extending the road from the, the lot to the north at, by the Wendy's to the, the storage facility to the south, and the retention pond is required. We have already received comments from the city, the engineering department, and a couple other departments, we're currently working through those and should have those wrapped up, I believe by the, by the end of the week for resubmitting it back to the city.
Great, any questions for Mr. Sutton? No questions, thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion on twenty-five dash zero seven.
Motion to approve Site Plan twenty-five zero seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, the second was Randy. Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamros?
Yes.
Drew Cash?
Yes.
Woody Emmons?
Yes.
Sam Cressy?
Yes.
Drew Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Frost?
Yes.
Mike Portalese?
Yes.
Chris Torri?
Yes, and twenty-five zero seven passes. Now we're moving on to the last item on the agenda, which is Site Plan twenty-five dash zero eight, a request submitted by John Joseph Cousins seeking a final site plan approval for the construction of a new eleven thousand three hundred and forty square foot liquor store located on the south side of Douglas Road, east of Golden Corral, one thirty-five East Douglas Road.
Good evening again, Chris Gadowski, Abbott Marsh Consultants, three fifteen West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. Thank you for the positive staff report. I represent the broker, John Pericini, and the prospective buyer of this one and a half acre property, Interpreet Peter Singh here as well. What you see is on our site plan we submitted is a pretty high-level schematic detailed site plan, we still have final construction plans to make, but this is for a larger liquor store, eleven thousand three hundred and forty square feet, the PUD permits this, there's some unique things with extra signage, higher architectural standards. Abbott Marsh did develop the property to the west, the Golden Corral, so we're very familiar with that site, and during that process, there was a ditch reduction from seventy-five to thirty-five, so that's represented on the site plan as well. And then what you see in the site plan basically meets all the zoning standards from the zoning ordinance, it's a very tight-fit underground stormwater storage. I can answer any detailed questions on the site plan, John has a history of the property with the client, and Peter can answer any questions about the business.
Great, and it's not being released who the name of the brand of the liquor store?
I'll leave that to Peter, and just.
Not, I'm just out of curiosity.
He can share that, this is his second store he's building, and I think part of ten he's partnered with, so he's a regular at building, constructing.
Excellent, come up, tell us about it.
Interpreet Singh or Peter, proposed developer, or sorry, developer of the proposed liquor store, three 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 Deer Lake Drive, South Bend, Indiana. So as Chris was saying, actually, this is our, going to be our third constructed beer and wine spirit store, liquor store, and then we do have a total of nine right now, and then this will be our tenth operating, so if you could repeat the question, I'm sorry about that.
I was just curious to learn more about the business, what, what the name was and?
So the name we are still discussing.
Okay.
We have, you know, we have two names that we are known by in the city, in South Bend, in Alcar, in Mishawaka, we're not so sure if we want to carry those names forward, or if we want to come up with a new one. The reason being for that is, you know, this kind of concept, this kind of fine wine, fine spirit store. it is unseen right now, and especially in northern Indiana. So we want to make this kind of like a hub and something very high-end. So we're not sure if those names meet the standards of the standards that we want to build this store in. So that is undecided for now, to answer your question.
Yeah, it's great to learn more about your project.
Can you define what you mean by high-end?
High-end, so we're having like a fine wine, a proper fine wine tasting section. Haven't seen that too much. I know a few locations around here have a tasting area, but, so we want the decor. We want the design of that to be very, you know, elegant. And then just the overall layout, I mean, we would have, you know, higher-end. When I say high-end, I don't just mean design, I mean like the quality of the products too. So high-end whiskeys, high-end, you know, allocated bourbons, high-end wines, like I already mentioned. So there's a lot more to it than just what you see. It's what you buy as well, so that would be part of it. And then I know with, with liquor stores, we definitely want the outside to be attractive. So it's almost like it won't even look like a liquor store. It'll look like something, you know, something else, something better, but, yeah.
11,000 square feet's a pretty big building.
Yes, sir.
Besides wine tasting, are there other like activities that are going to be?
Yes, so we will have general tastings as well, which is where the distributors will have someone come out from the company. They will do their own tasting of their own products. They can give out information and so on and so forth. That'll be separate from the wine tasting section. We will also have a cigar humidor, which we're dedicating quite a few, quite a few square footage to that as well. We're thinking somewhere between 500 and 1,000 square foot just for the humidor section itself. That's going to be our main, I would say, our main two attractions. Yeah, and we'll have more area dedicated to those allocated bourbons. If you're a bourbon person, you'll know like allocated, like those are, that's a very big draw for any sort of a spirit store. So we'll have more area dedicated to that as well.
It's only a great concept.
Sounds like a good concept.
Thank you.
Good luck on getting all the allocated stuff.
I know.
Well, thanks for telling us more about, about your project. We're interested.
No worries.
About new things in the city, so it sounds exciting. Thank you. Is there any other questions on this presentation? No other questions? I'll take a motion on Site Plan 25-08.
Motion to accept Site Plan 25-08. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Donna, would you please call for the vote?
Chris Jamros?
Yes.
Drew Cash?
Yes.
Woody Emmons?
Yes.
Sam Cressy?
Yes.
Drew Johnson?
Yes.
Randy Frost?
Yes.
Mike Portalese?
Yes.
Chris Torti?
Yes, and Site Plan 25-08 passes. Thank you for the presentation. Is there any old business, Mr. City Planner?
None.
Any new business?
None.
Privilege of the floor out there, anybody? David? Nothing? All right, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
Well, first I would like to say, have, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, that's nice. I second that. We're adjourned. So we're not going to have, we're not going to have vape in the.